Well, it's six thirty. I'll call the meeting over. Do you have any additions?
No addition, no, no.
Approval is the select board minutes of nine eighteen twenty-three.
Make the motion to approve.
Yes, I can second that.
Any corrections, comments, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pay orders. We have pay orders of October third, twenty twenty-three for two two hundred and eighty-four thousand, twenty-one dollars and twenty-three cents.
I'll make a motion. You said, uh, I'll make a motion for two eighty-four, twenty-one, twenty-three.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Road commissioners report. We don't have a road commissioner tonight.
Just the only thing he said is he will, he's still trying to work out with, uh, WILK, the paving schedule.
The thing I was gonna bring up was there's several places where they dug up the roads around town here and they haven't paved back over again.
Right.
That was, that's for the water, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
That's kind of water's responsibility, isn't it?
It is. I heard it come once ago, if you remember, the one here in Taft and the one down on Railroad.
Typically higher fill load, aren't they?
Yeah. I'm looking over the email area.
Something probably had to do before winter.
Honorable mentions. We want to thank Bill Lawson for winterizing the Elfin Lake concession stand. And Tom Ford for collating questions and taking meeting notes for the Elfin Lake public beach erosion reduction. Public comments? We don't have any public. So we're on to the coin drop request from the fire department. Well, this was tabled from our last meeting because it wasn't on the agenda. The fire department wants to hold the coin drop on October seventh with a rain date of October eighth.
I'll make a motion. We approve.
I'll second.
Discussion?
What we usually, we, precedence has been that we keep doing this for the rotary and for the fire department, so don't see a reason why we wouldn't.
I do have one question.
Yep.
The state statute state that you need to be seven hundred and fifty feet from any signaled intersection. I don't, I don't think when you're in front of the rotary, you're seven hundred and fifty feet, are you?
I haven't personally totally measured it out. I'm not positive. I wrote down the same mile markers that we have the last however many years with the state and they've always approved it that way where it is, but I'm not, to be honest, I don't know exactly if it is that far.
That was my only question. I just, I mean, I wasn't aware of that either until I read the statute.
I've always communicated back and forth with the state guy several times every time I fill it out and I've never had him question it or ask me and I've even told him it's.
I mean, they're kind of the ones that came up with the location anyways originally.
Yeah.
Cause you had proposed a couple other locations and they said, no, you were too close to the light.
Exactly.
So it ended, that's why it ended up getting pushed back up there.
Yep.
It might be worth it if, I mean, I don't think we can, because we're, because we don't have anything saying that it's not, then I think like if you guys could, just do it just for our own sakes for future.
Yeah.
I think just that'd be good.
Yeah, I can talk with the state guys. He's very.
The state, it's the state statute.
Right.
And the state approved the permit.
Right, 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 right. But just, just for our own vacation, just so we know that it's all in the right.
He's very, he'll communicate right back with me. I can always shoot him an email.
Perfect.
Next time and just say, hey, make sure this is okay.
Yeah.
He's very.
Okay, cool. I just, I just don't want us to, I, it sounds, it feels like it's right and I don't think it's that close to seven fifty, but I don't know for sure and it just.
No, I have a couple different guys that I beat back and forth, so.
Right.
Next time.
If they're saying it, there's, there's nice saying like, oh, they, they approved it, but you know, that never always works.
Oh, I can shoot them next time. I'll just verify that everything is legit with them and.
Yeah.
Double check.
Yeah.
It's not a problem.
Not sure our approval really goes anywhere either. I might mention that the last meeting. It might not be our authority or whatever anyway, so.
Oh, really? Because it's a state road?
Right.
Huh.
I've always just come back, I guess formality, I've done it since the twenty-two years I've been on the format.
We appreciate it.
In your graces.
We had a motion and a second, right? So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
I will thank you.
We appreciate it. That's it?
Thanks, guys.
Alright, thank you.
Good night.
Yeah.
Conservation commission mission statement. I believe we tabled this last time because we weren't sure. What, was what?
Is this in the packet?
Yes. It's right after the Vermont Agency of Transportation requirements and coin drop.
Oh, oh, I thought, I thought the, the.
An email, copy of the email. It's not in here.
Or what they, their doc. You said that the enclosed document.
Oh.
No, their mission statement is to protect waterfront's land, water, air, and biodiversity.
Good.
The rest of the document that we had gotten was basically just their action plans and such.
Right. So, I mean, it sounds good to me in terms of it's concise and it seems like what they're, that they're. Yeah. Yeah, they don't want to say through this, cause then maybe they will, they don't want to say like through maintenance of stone metal, just in case stone metal goes away for whatever reason. So, that's good. Do we need a consensus or? What about?
A little formal.
Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the conservation commission, mission statement of protect waterfront's land, water, air, and biodiversity.
One second.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So preliminary designs for Elfin Lake public beach. Questions and comments were submitted to Fitzgerald. We had a meeting last Thursday. Kevin Fitzgerald and.
Kevin Fitzgerald?
Yeah, there was another fellow with him.
Jordan Duffy?
Jordan Duffy. We're here in person to answer and address the questions. Tom Ford actually did a good job of taking notes. Which I have somewhere, as everybody else does too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on your, on the table, yep.
So the southernmost planned regenerative area after discussion was going to be eliminated. The dock, they had it set up in the middle of the regenerative area. Now, that's going to be moved to the northernmost point.
So to the right of where the.
As you stand and you look at the lake, it'll be to the right.
Okay.
There was concern with that southern regenerative area that we were eliminating too much of the beach, so.
Okay, I can see that.
On the dock that is in the plans is actually, can't be included in the grant, so that would some, be something the town has to buy.
Okay.
There are several trees in their design that they would be part of the grant. Um, adjusting of the gutters on the rec building can actually be part of the grant. Cause it deals with the erosion. And the bio retention basins that are just holding the water, they're designed, they called it a ten-year storm. And those will be planted with a wildflower flower mix. The lifeguard station. The area that we have now with, that's pretty a permanent thing, um, that's going to be eliminated and the lifeguard station will become movable rather than permanent.
That's because otherwise it'll, because we need to have that retention wall for, to set that up or?
Well, they wanted to make sure that because there's going to be a dock and stuff off to the right.
Yeah.
And there'll be trees in the new area.
Okay.
There was concern whether there'd be a, a clear line of sight for the lifeguard station or not.
Okay.
So the thought was to move it down closer to the water. And if it's movable, we can figure out where the best place actually is and.
Versus having it in the plans and having that set in stone and then, yeah, okay.
So.
And it's sturdy being movable?
That's, that was the one, yeah.
And it's sturdy?
Sturdy enough for a kid to jump off if they need to.
Well, it may be something that we end up replacing or refurbishing or.
I'm just thinking.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll keep it portable until you figure out where, where the best place for it is. Once you do that, then anchor it down and.
I'm just thinking, yeah, I'll sign it up for you.
It was a good meeting.
Excellent.
Sandy, you know Sandy was listening in on the phone from Chicago.
Yep. It was good, it was good. And all the wildflowers, they've, doing a lot of the plantings will be wildflowers because they're the lowest maintenance.
Right. I wonder if there's anything that, I know Ann was, is just doing the boy in the boot, kind of that garden, but whether or not there's anything else also with any perennials that maybe she could advise us on, in addition after this is all set up. Again, low maintenance, just, but then also just kind of an extension of the UVM stuff.
Yeah, and, and they still have Holly, I believe her name was.
Right.
That consult, they were going to consult with her about what they could use for native plants and perennials and stuff, so.
Excellent.
Anything you want to add, Sandy? Anything you think I'm missing?
Do they have an idea of what, do, so this is the big question, so do we, cause we've been going through this design phase for a while, do we now approve it or they just, it just gets a, they're just going to move forward when they have the time?
Well, it's got to be done by the end of the month, so.
Oh, it's got to be, oh, it's, oh, okay.
Yeah, in October, yeah.
This was the final go-around on, on the design.
Okay.
So the, the next phase will be, they provide us with construction plans.
Okay.
And some cost estimates, I believe, and, uh, and then it'll be a case of we need to start.
So like excavation, something like that will probably, well, probably, hopefully we can get road crew to do it, but we would have to price that kind of stuff out.
Yeah, I'm not sure the road crew would be part of it. I think it would be a case of somebody that specializes in doing this.
Yeah.
Type of work.
I just wasn't sure how much they're involved in the actual construction bit of it, or if it's just design.
This here will be strictly designed.
Right, right. Okay.
Any other discussion?
That was one of the concerns you had too, Carolyn, right? The location of the dock.
I was just more questioning, it just seems.
Yeah. So a lot of people agreed with you, so.
Then imagine that the rope off area would be right in line with the dock so that if there is a lifeguard on duty, they don't have to worry about going across that rope. Cause the, we only have them kind of survey what's inside the rope area, right?
That was quite a conversation.
Okay.
During the meeting. Was the lifeguard just focus on the swimming area? They watch over, if, if there was a fishing dock, do they watch over the dock?
Right, cause are they looking out at somebody in the inner tube that's kind of hanging out that's never, not in that inner tube anymore, halfway through the, in the middle of the lake? Okay. That's a whole nother discussion for.
Part of the discussion was, do they need to rope off an area that's not near the dock because people will fish off the dock and there's the potential for people losing fish hooks in the lake and.
And just losing fish hooks and people.
That's what I'm saying, you know, it's like, uh, apparently my kids swimming around fishing people.
Well, that can be just as simple as a sign that says no fishing off dock.
Swimmers are present or.
Yeah.
Well, just in general, no fishing off the dock.
Well, the, I thought the intention of the dock is of people.
Is to fish.
Yeah.
Same kind of, but.
Yeah.
I mean, a good fisherman wouldn't be fishing, excellent swimmers anyways.
No.
You know?
You know, when people are swimming, the fish are going to be scared away.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
Hope you don't, moving on, concession stand invoices. Julia is asking. I guess she got an email from Shannon Pilick about where some invoices, Bill Lawson's invoice and the A-one sewer invoice. One line item that they should come out of. In my mind, unplugging a sewer line is, is a rec maintenance issue, so money should come out of that line, I feel.
What was, what is the work they actually have to do?
It was, um, one of those toilets clogged up a couple of times.
Rotary, the sewer line or whatever.
Okay.
Someone was putting stuff down that clogged the toilets.
They don't have enough money in the maintenance.
No.
It's actually, that line's going to end up going over.
Yeah.
By the same token, I don't think we should disguise it. Because when we start budgeting next year, we need accurate reflection of what we're spending this year.
Yeah, it should be under maintenance, not, yeah. Definitely.
But when we talked about instead of, um, the minutes from that, we had talked about them wanting to do repairs and that they would be coming out of the building fund. So if we said that, then.
I think the intention at that time though was, we were talking about like replacing the toilet or.
Yeah, building repairs is not maintenance, you know.
Fixing the ceiling.
Right. The doors, whatever, yeah.
Putting the new garage door and stuff like that, I mean.
Right. Is, Sandy, do we have the bills that they're talking about?
We have the total amount.
Right.
Total amount, so that's, the total amount that they have is nineteen hundred? Okay. But if, I, I guess the, the big thing is that if it was a clogged toilet, needed nineteen hundred dollars worth of work, that's.
Well, they were there three times. Bill Lawson was there twice.
Okay.
And then the at that point, he was able, wasn't able to deal with it, so then they had to get ahold of A-one to come in.
Okay. I guess the, the thing that I would think about is that it doesn't, it's definitely, there's an idea under maintenance, but this also seems like an emergency kind of situation where they had to in order to continue having the concession stand open, having that.
But that would, that would fall into ma, even if it was an emergency, it's still going to fall into maintenance, not under building improvements.
So was they didn't replace any pipes, it was just rotary?
Yeah.
Basically?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it is expensive. I'm just baffled that, that, how much.
Think about it, if a plumber's there for four or five hours, then a hundred dollars an hour, a hundred dollars plus if he's been called in on an emergency.
Well, that's, that's what it is.
You know, four or five hours, you're five, six hundred bucks.
Phil had to call A-one and they were not available and he pulled a, this is an emergency, can you show up? So it was, it's, it was expensive.
I mean, I'm not sure, did they, what did they do? Did they scope the pipe or did they pump the septic? I mean, pumping the septic alone's like five or six hundred dollars.
Well, I think initially, I think initially they pumped the septic after the first time Bill was there.
Yeah.
And then it ended up plugged up again.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Bill there again. And then they determined there wasn't something that they could do. The pipe, the pipe into the septic tank was plugged because somebody was flushing.
Okay.
I don't know, diapers, God knows what, but.
But I guess the big question is like, so when we, this is just a question budgeting wise, in a situation like this where there was no way around it, they had to do this thing. But that's going to put them over budget, that means that they have less budget next year? Is that how that gets impacted or?
Just the whole bottom line of rec would be over.
Right.
Which carries into like the whole overall budget, but it doesn't, you know, when, when you see that, like we have done this before and that it's just been taken out of maintenance, it hasn't been priced like this, so it's, you know.
Right.
And they got actually six hundred in the, uh, the water issue anyways, because the town's doing the digging, so they saved six hundred dollars, so they've got plenty of money in their budget to cover the whole bill, just where does it come from, so.
I guess it's just that, is that, cause they don't start and then again until June, but does that completely wipe out their maintenance budget for the year? So until June, they can't really do any maintenance? Unless it's something worth a major improvement to the.
If it's something that we have to do, we have to do it.
Right.
Right.
That line just becomes an overrun, a deficit.
Okay.
Yeah, still have, they still have the building fund if they want to do any replacement of anything or.
Right.
Whatever, so that's still there.
It's more just a bookkeeping thing and then a planning.
Right.
For budget and then next time around.
Next year that jumps to three thousand.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, I guess then it comes out of maintenance. I just don't want to make, I don't want to make it a thing where, where penalizing them for something that it wasn't like they.
No.
They set up to do something and then it costs more than what they had gotten quoted, it's just, this is something that we had to do, I just want to make sure we're not putting any blame on rec for this, so.
No, no, it's not their fault, it's just.
Just unfortunate that that's what it was and that's how we set up the budget.
Yes.
Okay. Then I am fine with, uh, keeping on maintenance. And then maybe then it is really important, like you said, Mark, to really try to make sure that there's three thousand or more, especially if you have something.
Well, that's why, that's why you put it into maintenance.
Right.
At the end of the year, you look at, say, hey, you went over, let's add a little bit of extra money.
Right, right.
And I mean, just as a general comment, um, it looks like we're going to end up doing the same thing on legal expenses before the year's out, so.
Right, 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 right. Right.
Hey, Tom.
Hey, sir.
You've been buzzing right through things tonight, Tom.
Oh!
The board has approved your mission statement.
Good seeing everybody. Thank you.
Um, we did go, also go over the, um, meeting with the Fitzgeralds, if there's any impressions that you'd like to, we, we went through the list of notes that you provided, so.
Uh, yeah, I thought it was a good, good discussion. I thought we landed in a good place. It was good input from everybody that was there and it sounds like they were in line with everything that we were suggesting and they had some good suggestions too, so I think it's going in the right direction. So I don't know where you're, if you have time in the agenda, but Sandy, I saw your email today about the trees. So last week, last two weeks ago when I was here, I had mentioned that the conservation commission was going to plant trees around our home paths. And then we subsequently to that have another meeting and the group said, well, there's lots of locust trees that are propping up and growing pretty quickly. So the decision was kind of maybe back off on the tree planting and maybe just doing a smaller scale, which I think is consistent with what you were saying Rob was suggesting as well. But as I was reading through that grant, um, I know at one time, one point we had obtained the possibility of planting trees, uh, along Main Street, but I think the conclusion at the time, just from the folks that I talked to, was that that's a state road.
Yes.
And that's going to make a problem for trying to put tree line that, that road there. But it looks like this grant is directed at that.
Yeah.
Again, I apologize, but I don't mean to derail whatever you've walked, I've walked in, but.
But that's what he said, it's more of a, a larger scale than a few like that, but he said he'd get in touch with you about some.
Okay, so I'll just work with Rob.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you need me for anything? Is there anything else relevant to me, Steven, or your agenda?
No, I think we've covered everything that you were going to come for, so.
Very good. Thanks a lot, everybody.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So we're on to proposed zoning regulations. Erica Bernier at the last meeting had wanted approval to send the proposed zoning regulations to VLCT for review. We had tabled it, wanting to know an estimate of what it would cost. They came back with an estimate between fifteen hundred and two thousand dollars.
What's in our budget? What's in their budget for that?
Yeah. Nothing.
No.
This isn't budgeted for.
So would this have to go under our legal fees?
Yes.
Okay.
The other thing is that we've got an email back from Gary Cupfer on the previous discussion we had about some permits the the development review board had given out.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
And he had a couple of concerns of what's in these proposed zoning regulations, so I'm wondering if we should still table this decision until we talk with Erica on Gary's concerns.
Especially industrial.
Especially industrial.
Yes.
I, I do think, hey, I know it's, we've been spending a lot of legal stuff this year, but I do think it's, especially at a hundred bucks an hour, which is something we won't be able to really beat in terms of getting an actual legal review of something, but with all the back and forth we had last year about farming and everything else, and chickens and stuff like that, I think it makes sense for us to show that we're doing our due diligence, even if it is kicking our butts in terms of our overages. Just send, I think it just sends a better thing to the town than to everybody else that we're trying to make sure that we're doing it on the up and up, which we are already, but.
But at the same token, if the town, our town attorney has already said there's issues in this draft-
For sure. Oh, that's interesting, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't realize who Gary was.
We should have him give his issues before we send it off to further review.
Yeah, that's my feeling.
Yeah, that makes sense, because why send something out to them, have to redo it?
Pay them two thousand dollars and they come back with the same issue, saying that it's not-
Oh, so you're thinking that they're not gonna find anything more than what Gary's already found?
I think we should fix what Gary, address what Gary's concerned with.
Yeah.
Then send it off.
And then send it off and see if they come up with anything else, too.
Right, 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 no, I don't like that.
So it's proofreading our rough draft before we send it to the teachers.
Right, 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 right. No, I, I just, I got confused about the, who was Gary was and everything else, no, but that makes perfect sense.
Is that something you want to do on the next meet, at the next meeting, or separately?
I've got a couple of questions. We're gonna send that off to the Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns for review. Is that gonna be reviewed by their lawyer, attorney group?
Yes.
So, if that's gonna be reviewed by their attorney group, why have our attorney do it? Or-
Because he already asked them to do it.
Or vice versa, if our attorney's doing it, why have Leagues of Cities and Towns do it also? I'm just, I'm looking at an awful lot of money going out the door for something that seems to happen every, like, five years here.
We only have Gary look at one specific section. And knowing what else was going on, where things in town, we wanted to know the rest of it, and had to look at everything, that's, was that okay? So he's already given his feedback on one section, we should see if that's something we need to address. And then Leagues of Cities and Towns can address everything else.
All right.
I'm just, I'm just making sure I'm understanding that that's what-
We've got a lot of money this year going out on legal fees. It seems like in this case, we might be doubling up if he's reviewed it, but if he's only reviewed a certain section, then-
He's only done-
Oh, the issue here.
Certain issue of the year, so.
Right, and then, but his, his weight, I mean, I'm sure his averages would be, if he did the entire thing, that would be over what we're getting from VLCT, right?
I don't know, I think they're probably comparable, but-
A hundred bucks is, is-
Cheap.
Yeah, if it's a chair for a hundred and fifty, right?
I, I did a, I did a website for somebody for, whose legal fees and they're doing, like, pro paid work and they're three fifty an hour.
Yeah, like three fifty and three an hour.
Yeah. So. About sixty bucks, seventy-five dollars an hour, I was like, sorry. It doesn't really, it's nothing, it's a drop in the bucket.
Well, it sounds like they would, we should go with them ultimately, but not at this point.
And also just be-
Sorry, Jerry.
No, you please, yeah.
I was just gonna like timeframe any of that stuff, we don't have any timeframe to send it off at this point, right? Because that's just us getting it done.
Well, I think she was hoping to get it on the March ballot for a vote, but I don't, I don't think that's-
It's still on to work, so.
But they, and they're saying that-
We have a, you've got a public hearing.
I know.
We've got a select board hearing, another public hearing, and then a, then a select board vote, and then another public hearing. But it is like three public hearings to make that happen.
There's thirty days between each, some of those, and so.
It's just not gonna happen for the-
March is, even if it's started now, March is pretty tight.
So we're already probably, the ship's already sailed.
Yeah.
Because the, for VLCT to review it by December tenth or eleventh, whatever, that'd be if they got like tomorrow. So it's not, that's not gonna happen?
Right, and by the time you get it back, are they gonna review it the tenth, the other back, the fifteenth-ish? Then you've got to schedule your review and schedule a public hearing, is on it?
And warnings.
Yeah, and warnings, yeah.
So that's not gonna happen.
Take our time, then.
Yeah, yeah, do it, do it, right.
What is the mechanism that you want to, how you want to just-
I think that the next meeting, it should be on the agenda that we talk with Erica concerned.
Okay.
But do we need to, do we wait till the next meeting to, to do that? Or can we just forward his concerns to Erica and say, you know, please make these changes, or please review? And at the next meeting, give us your recommendations and your consideration rate for your opinion on this?
Yeah, I, I like, I like that idea, just because we push things a lot. And that would be a little, what were you gonna say, Bruce, I'm sorry?
That would be fine with me, I mean.
Yeah.
Maybe Sandy could set up a phone conversation with Erica and our attorney if she has questions.
Okay.
Just that way in the next meeting, we can decide.
She may have to show the way it has to be.
Right.
Okay. I'll rule it if she wants, okay.
Okay, let's move on then. Temporary zoning administrator. So Erica Burner and Bruce Dobbins will be applying for a bed and breakfast permit for their home on Main Street. The town will need someone else to handle the zoning permit paperwork. I guess Julie is willing to do that. Do we want to appoint her as a temporary zoning administrator?
I'll make that motion if you need one.
Yes, we do.
I'll make the motion to appoint Julie as temporary zoning administrator for the purpose, purpose of this one issue.
I'll second.
Has Julie done something like this in the past?
Yes, she has.
Yeah.
All those in favor appointing Julie as temporary zoning administrator?
Aye.
All right.
Should we specify in this, should we have specified in this motion that it was just for this one issue?
I did.
He did.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark, I didn't hear you. Okay.
Okay, good.
Because Emily would totally say, never mind.
Get that instant replay.
Can you edit that out, Mark?
Okay. So Sandy has given us a draft agreement for the town painting the exterior of the town hall with Kevin McNally, the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars. And also an additional six hundred dollars for insurance. Do you want to offer us to sign it?
This is the same estimate that we had last time, right? That, except for the six hundred, or has it gone up?
It was the same price, fourteen eight, yeah, plus the six hundred, yes, just for the insurance, yep.
He's added the six hundred dollars for insurance. So we, we had told him that-
Right, he's not gonna work for, he's not gonna be up on a lift without insurance for us. I'll make a motion that we approve, have Bruce sign this agreement for not exceed fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars for painting of town hall minus the clock tower, with an additional six hundred dollars for liability insurance.
All those in favor?
All right.
So I'm actually gonna send it to him first, and I'll have him sign it, and then when he gets it back, I'll have you sign it, I'll send that to him.
So, select board comments or concerns?
Um, hmm. The road crew is opening up the ditch for the water line next week, or this week?
Thursday.
Huh?
Thursday.
Okay, but they said they're leaving it open, how come?
Well, they're gonna put stakes and-
Yeah, but how come, how, why is it standing open?
Because the water installation part isn't gonna be happening till Monday. Monday, they, they-
Road crew doesn't work on Monday.
Yeah, Monday's a holiday, so they couldn't do it Monday?
I thought the purpose of having the road crew and the, was to coordinate the whole thing together all at the same time? Okay, I'm good. That's all, I just thought that we, we talked about doing it all at once, but.
He did.
It's just getting back.
People didn't realize that the night was a holiday for the road crew, I guess, so. Anything else? So other business, um, I covered, Gary Cupfer had called Sandy saying he had some recommendations for the board concerning the Development Review Board's decision on the Creek Road property, so. At this point, I guess we haven't heard anything back from Vermont. Emergency management on their questions?
Um, not yet, but they're, they're gonna, um, yeah, they haven't answered the questions about maintenance, but they'll have something for you at the next meeting.
Just discuss installing the water at the ball field. Do you wanna discuss, Sandy, your meeting with Josh, or?
Yeah, so this is, Leslie Wright from Natural Resources Conservation Services came down and looked at Waldo Lane, because of the crack in Waldo Lane, and then behind, and Elm Street Extension Bridge, and then the area behind the houses on River Street and Creek Road, where it kind of divides because of the mill. They really didn't think that the Waldo Lane was gonna be, would be able to be funded. They were more optimistic about doing, getting the debris out of the river behind the houses. And that project, there just needs to be more discussion about that, because once we take that on, we're now responsible for keeping that channel clear for the next ten years. So, and, you know, it's, I think if Leslie is available to come to a meeting before we move forward, I think everybody should hear. I think there's positives for doing it, but there's responsibility too.
But the alternative is we don't have that, and then theoretically the creek is blocked up, so it could then slow, the water would slow down and then pool. Right, right.
But he did say, you know, once, the duri is not gonna stay out of there, so, you know, we remove it and whatever, but it'll be back.
Do we have something that we, can we use the front end loader to remove that kind of stuff in the future? Okay.
I think, I think the consensus was that we, we do have equipment, we would have to get a, you know, Army Corps would have to be involved and a lot, and VTR, so there'd be a lot of A and R state permits to do it.
Okay. Versus them taking, taking on all that stuff during this first time? Like, because we couldn't clear it out right now, because it would be, we would have to go through those permitting processes, talk about-
If we wanted to do that, we would have to go through all the permitting processes, it's not gonna happen otherwise. I mean, the state's not gonna come down and do it.
Okay.
So it's either the town or no, no one.
Right.
But like Leslie said that, and Josh said, you know, it'll come back, so it's not gonna be ten years of no debris in that area. It'll, it'll come back, and then the town's responsible for it. And I don't fully understand either, if the liability goes beyond, once we clear it out and we're responsible for keeping it cleared out.
Yeah.
Then do we have to-
I just don't know, we, this, you know, nobody-
We're not experts on clearing this out, either.
No, no, and Phil and Steve did not go to the meeting, with Charlie and I.
Okay.
The other thing is, if we have to clear it out a second time, do we have to go through all the permitting?
Well, yeah, exactly, if they're gonna give us a permit to do it the first time, can we just go and do it from there?
Say we gotta take care for ten years, are we, are we in the clear for the next ten years to do things, or we gotta go through the permitting every time?
Right.
And it also seems like if we notice this issue, are we liable now? Seems to go backwards.
I mean, I think it was a good, it was a really good eye-opening first visit, but there's a lot of questions. So I think what they're doing right now is putting together numbers and seeing, you know, what funding is available, and how much they would cover, how much the town would cover. And then, I, I mean, I think at some point, he'll need to come to a meeting, and-
Because like, if they, like, I would feel a little bit more comfortable if, like, they could help us just learn how to actually want to do it, like, take this debris out, leave that debris here, like, having some kind of-
Right, right.
Because we know, like, our guys know how to do roadwork and know how to clear debris from the road, but the, the-
They will.
The river, that's pretty strong.
They will, Josh Carroll from A and R would help, design, design it all.
Okay, oh, and then we would just be fulfilling his, okay, okay, that's what I was thinking.
No, we wouldn't do, we wouldn't do that.
I thought we were just, you know, turn up his permits and then just, Charlie's gonna go down and start scooping it out, whatever he feels like he desires.
No, they would, they would, they would help us all the way, all the way, no, they would help. And the flood plain manager is there, A and R, and this, um, Leslie Wright.
That was where mine were, he was.
Yes, no, we're not throwing Charlie out there.
Why don't you just throw some, go do it?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Swam out, get it, bring it back.
So it sounds like this is something in the future that-
I do. I think so, I will just, you know, they're, they're working on, even just amounts, I mean, you know, there was, there's to permit how much, and even trying to figure out how much funding it would be for the two of them to just sit there and try to figure out how much debris is in the river that we would need to take out, and how much that would cost, and what, what the funding is, and then the permitting process, so it's-
I mean, you know, honestly, if, if, if they did pay to clean that out, and we cleaned it out, and we took it over for ten years, the money that we put in there once every couple of years to clean the debris out of there would probably be cheaper than having to take everything out of the town garage and, you know, continually replace plywood and insulation every time we get a flood. So it may, may be in our best interest to, to consider that. I mean, we've got the excavator again.
Right.
It's, yeah, yeah, I'd take them a day or two probably, after the initial, probably take them a week, you know, I don't know, I haven't been down in there, but take them a while on the, on the initial, but probably once it's done, you know, I wouldn't say maybe a day down in there to, you know, clean the debris out the next time. And that may save us a lot of hassle, a lot of money.
Well, and that, and also just the idea that we know that this is not gonna be the last storm we're gonna get.
Right.
And it's not like it's gonna wait ten years for us, it's gonna come like next year, in a year.
But if we have to every year, like Bruce said, go in and get a permit.
Right.
Then, that's kinda, we'll just put multiple years on that one permit and say, we're gonna do the same thing again and again and again. we'll just put multiple years on that one permit and say, we're going to do the same thing again and again and again.
I wouldn't get one.
Yeah, exactly. Can we get a whole bunch first on this?
We have a permit running with the state. I just change the date on it every year. And do the same thing every year, so.
Yeah, but it would be really nice to have him actually told us.
I think so too. Maybe once, once he gets a little bit farther down the road in the, in the process and when he gets some more.
There's that buried bike, everything that's gone on.
Yeah.
I mean, there's nothing out there, like I said, I haven't really been out there. I know where the creek goes, but there's nothing out in there now that comes springtime that's going to create a major hassle, is there? I mean, as far as flooding again?
No, I mean, there's a pretty big tree by the Creek Road Bridge. That came out, but I don't know if that's, that's not really part of this, so.
Right.
You know, you also have to be careful, like when you fix something here, it doesn't become a problem downstream. So that's, that's the angst of it all.
And also just the variables, like I think about like the boring part behind our house, like how every year that completely changes in terms of its flow, in terms of what rocks are there and what big bulge are there. So that changes things every time how much water's dumping into the creek from there.
You should just say, no, we're very much, it's changed in the last couple of years.
You'll have riverside property here before we're done another couple of years.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. On a different note, Sandy, Jim Bagnell, Stephanie Burke, myself, we met concerning the right-of-way data for the school street sidewalk project on the 25th of September. Copies of what we saw and observed were sent on to the designers. We have a functioning copier in the town hall yet.
It actually self-fixed. It's, the repairman was here for a day and a half. And then Jill and I were over there, over in her office, and somebody else was in there. Oh, John Tiffany, the assessor. And it started making a noise and Jill goes, why isn't it making that noise? And it lit up. And then she remembered that the repairman said that he was going to do something with the software and she thought maybe he did something remotely. He showed up two hours later and hadn't done anything and it's worked perfectly.
Okay.
I know, I know.
Just don't talk about it anymore.
Nope. Town hall ghosts, goblins, something, I don't know. It is October.
Did it print anything? That should be a question.
Yeah, exactly.
Where the spirit's talking to you.
We're listening backward text on one of somebody's.
I think we've covered everything for tonight.
Nice. Just try it out.
I'll make a motion. Will you adjourn?
Sandy?
All those in favor?
Hi.